We'll get this started. This is a Public Safety Committee meeting today. It's Thursday, November 12, 2020, and we have one item on our agenda this evening, and that is Ordinance 20-20. I believe Councilmember Piedmont Smith will be presenting.
Yes, thank you. And one of the co-sponsors of the legislation, Matt Flaherty, is also here. I'm not sure if the other co-sponsor, Kate Rosenbarger, will be able to join us. But yes, I will start with a brief overview. Of course, we talked about this on October 28 as well. And let me just go ahead and share my screen. Well, sorry. I'm not able to. My menu is over the portion that I am trying to share with you all. So let me stop that. My apologies, I'm having technical difficulties. Let me do this. Okay. All right, I will try this again. All right, here we go. So Ordinance 2020 is the establishment of a Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission that we are abbreviating as a CAPS Commission. And I will just review briefly the proposal, the purpose of the commission.
Excuse me, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
What do you have on your shared screen as an email?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Hopefully, it's not a that's very strange. Okay, let me try this again.
I think you almost had it there.
I'll get there. Okay, can you see it now?
Yay. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm so sorry, everybody.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, we've got it.
Okay. Thank you. I apologize for the technical problems. So the Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission, Ordinance 2020. The purpose of the commission and the purpose of the legislation to create this commission is to respond to members of our community who have told us through email, through conversations, through a petition, and through various public meetings that they do not feel safe in the community. So our goals with this commission is to look at non-police alternatives to public safety challenges, to look at public safety perceptions among marginalized community members, and to look at evidence-based interventions from other cities and whether they could work here. Ultimately, the goal is to create a safer community for all residents of Bloomington. The appointments to the commission would be made by the city council, and there would be 11 members. The duties of the commission are specified as follows: to gather data about how marginalized groups feel about and experience public safety; to research various approaches and explore best practices to improve public safety, especially outside the scope of law enforcement; to make recommendations to city government; and to promote a broader view of public safety through outreach efforts. Now, we have heard that there's some confusion because there are several entities that touch upon public safety related to city government. We do have the Board of Public Safety, which is created by state statute, and it is all appointed by the mayor. According to statute, the Board of Public Safety shall have control and oversee the police and fire departments of the city. Then we have a Proposed Future of Policing Task Force, which is part of the racial equity initiatives through the Divided Communities Project. And the Future of Policing Task Force from its description is specific to law enforcement. It will identify best practices, review practices here locally, and make recommendations to the city as well as county and IU police departments. Then we do have the Stride Crisis Center, which was just opened in late August, I believe. And this is a safe place for people who come in contact with law enforcement to go to get connected with social services, especially addiction treatment. The Stride Coalition was formed to address the prevalence of addiction issues in the community. And then, going the full circle here, the Community Advisory on Public Safety, the CAPS Commission, which is what we're talking about tonight, would be created by the common council and would have a broad view of public safety, looking at non-police alternatives to public safety challenges, public safety perceptions among marginalized community members, and evidence-based interventions from other cities. So there is a distinct difference between these four entities. So we wanted to address some of the other questions that came out of the Public Safety Committee meeting on October 28. First of all, we will be introducing an amendment to require the city council review the CAPS Commission after two years to determine ongoing needs, the commission's effectiveness, and whether the commission should continue to meet. So that was a concern that we heard from colleagues, that this be a long-term commission that, you know, that might not be necessary. So we have, we are going to bring the amendment to require a review after two years. And then there was a lot of discussion last time about whether it should be a commission or a task force or a focus group. So just to be clear, a focus group, according to Merriam-Webster, is a small group of people whose response to something such as a new product or a politician's image is studied to determine the response that can be expected from a larger population. So a focus group really reacts to a proposal that is already created. A task force is not really defined in city code, but the general definition is that it would be narrowly focused on a discrete issue or a time-limited task. For example, at the city council level, we've had the Peak Oil Task Force and the Deer Task Force in the last 15 years or so, and those each had a distinct task, therefore, task force, to, to complete and report to deliver. And then, so in contrast with those two, we have a commission. And the purpose and goals of a commission is defined in city code. And there is staffing and expected outcomes are clearly defined. And of course, here we're seeking to add a commission with clearly defined goals as well. A commission also serves to empower the people that serve on it, in this case, people from marginalized communities, because a commission can, can form, can shape its own work plan, so to speak. They have a task, but they or they have a purpose and goals to fulfill, but they can decide best themselves how to get there. We see that in our other citizen commissions. You know, the Environmental Commission, the Commission on the Status of Black Males, et cetera. They kind of set their own work plan of how they're going to accomplish their goals. So that empowers people who serve, and I think that's one of our purposes. So continuing with some questions that we heard last time, how would we measure success of this CAPS Commission? Well, in the short term, we would have reporting from the commission about public safety perspectives and data on how especially marginalized residents interact with public safety officers and in general, how they perceive their public safety, their safety in public here in our community. So we would have some reporting and data on that. And then, also in the short term, we can expect some recommendations to the city council and the mayor based both on local input and the research of the evidence-based public safety measures that the commission would study. And these recommendations may impact future budgets or other policy policymaking by the city government. In the longer term, we would expect to see improvements in public safety outcomes. For example, increased perceptions of safety among marginalized residents. So if they're, you know, if we go out in five or seven years, we hope to find more people saying, yes, I do feel safe in Bloomington. We would expect eventually a reduced racial and economic and socioeconomic disparities in policing and carceral outcomes, meaning people who end up in the criminal justice system. Because currently, there, there are disparities, as has been shown by some residents who did the research. And eventually, we would expect to see reduced crime rates because of the interventions and the recommendations that this commission could bring to the table. So in sum, we propose the formation of the Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission because public safety means different things to different people and because the voices of marginalized folks are often not heard or listened to. And this gives us a venue for hearing those voices. It is our responsibility as city council members to work actively to make Bloomington a safer place for all residents. And with that, I am open to questions, and I will stop sharing my screen.
Thank you for that presentation, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. We want to open it up to committee member questions. Do we have any? Okay. Councilmember Scambler?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was thinking and organizing my thoughts here as we go. Thank you for the, for the presentation. I especially appreciate, you've obviously wrestled with a lot of the stuff we talked about last time, so thank you for that. Because those aren't easy questions that we answered. Just one thing that I'm kind of sticking on is the notion of a commission actually empowering. I wholeheartedly agree that these are voices that need to be represented when we make decisions. Commissions only, as written here, only have the power to make recommendations, though. They don't have the power to move money around. We have some commissions that do. So we have the Development Commission, Public Safety, can set up policies. But this is an advisory group. So what I'm struggling with is certainly it creates a venue, but overstating it to say that it empowers, I guess, is that when there's no money attached to it or anything like that. I mean, could you help me think about that is my broad question?
Well, I think the the comparison I had in mind was with a focus group. Because a focus group, you make the plan, you have an idea, and you're just asking them for feedback. Whereas in this case, we are asking the commission to come up with the ideas and to come up with a plan. So in that way, we are empowering them to set the direction that they want to recommend us to go in, and even the direction of what they're going to research, you know, that has worked in other places. So that was the main contrast for me, was the task for the focus group versus the commission. I think the power is that it would be in city code, which means, you know, it has that, how will I say it? It has that legitimacy. And it's, it's really then on us to listen to what they say. And, you know, the public can also point to it and say, hey, you appointed these people, and you should listen to what they say. So, I mean, I guess in that respect, you know, there's no set requirement that we must follow their recommendation, but it certainly is more likely if it's an official body that has been created and staffed by city council members. I don't know if Mr. Flaherty wants to add anything to that, and I don't, I think that Councilmember Rosenbarger is now on the call as well.
Yes, she is, by phone only. Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure. And Chair Sims, just as a point of order, would you prefer, since there's multiple co-sponsors, for us to raise our hand when we called on by you as chair, or is it appropriate for any of us to just chime in and answer to a question from committee members?
I would prefer you raise your hand, so I know that
Who to call on?
You wish to speak, yes.
Great, okay. Yeah, I would just add that I think, or echo Councilmember Piedmont Smith's comments, which is that commissions that don't, that aren't granted hard power, for instance, by state code or our own Bloomington Municipal Code, which is many of them, many of them have only soft power to, you know, recommend things to the council. So Parking Commission or the Commission on Sustainability, for instance. These two are bodies that have soft power, but I still think of that as a form of empowerment, because it is giving an official sanctioned city venue and a, and a charge to, you know, study and research and develop policy proposals and bring those to the council. And I think, in our experience, even dealing with commissions that only do have soft power, I think we do take seriously the recommendations put forth by those, with those groups, and very much appreciate the, the effort and, and hours that those residents commit to, to helping better the city, so, or improve the city. So I certainly grant the point that there's not a particular hard power to this commission, like, like, just like some of our others. But I think soft power, to me, is still a meaningful and form of empowerment that would be beneficial in this case. So thanks.
Thank you for that. But I may have one later, but I'll just yield for now, so.
Well, thank you. I had unmute and look at my text messages. Councilmember Rosenbarger wishes to add something. Are you? Okay.
Can you hear me?
Rosenbarger, are you on audio? Yes, we hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I can't even figure out how to raise my hand on here. I thought I could do that, but I'm not seeing it. I just wanted to add a little bit that I would say that empowerment isn't limited to necessarily actually, actual decision-making power or monetary power, but I think just the empowerment of being heard, since that is something that folks are saying that they don't feel like is even happening yet. So it is, you know, a step up in the direction of empowerment, I would say. And just speaking from my experience on the Land Use Committee, I would say we get reports from Environmental Commission and sometimes by Fed Commission about upcoming projects. And I think those add a lot of value, and the input there is so important to me, and it really, it, it does impact our decisions. I mean, we've definitely added reasonable conditions to some PUDs that have, that happened in this past year. So I think just having like a specific eye on a topic is very useful when there's just a lot to consider, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Any further questions from council members? Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. I'm trying to wrap my head around the whole purview of public safety. I think we've all recognized that it's a multifaceted thing. It's been stated on the slides that public safety means different things to different people. But as this would be a city-sponsored commission, is the focus for this body going to be strictly on the Bloomington Police Department, or is it going to encompass a number of areas where vulnerable people in our community, and we're all well aware of who they are and what their, what their issues are from our own outreach and research, but with respect to poverty, mental illness, addiction, homelessness, oppression, lack of opportunity, lack of hope, you know, housing, housing first. I would imagine that public safety is going to entail much, much more than just law enforcement, which of course is a completely independent function that, that does deal with laws and the breaking of laws and the responding to people committing crimes in our community. So can somebody give me an idea of the scope of where you see this body having a focus in terms of the research on how to help, and again, I'm going to use your words, marginalized folks. And, you know, again, can you give me just kind of a general overview of what some of those concerns are going to be and how they're going to be addressed to the city of Bloomington as a whole and not just simply the Bloomington Police Department?
Go ahead, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Thank you.
Yes, I think this commission is, is definitely a broad in scope, much broader than just law enforcement. So as we see in the, in the ordinance language, some of the things that they, that they might research is the establishment of an alternate crisis response phone number, investments in mental health care, addiction treatment, community centers, job training, things like that. So I don't want to prejudge where the commission is going to go. And myself, as, you know, somebody who, who has a seat at the table and is not a member of a disenfranchised group, I don't want to tell them where to go, you know? But certainly, the scope is very broad. So another, the next item in the list of what the commission shall do is to explore best practices in socially and racially just public safety measures in cities across the US. So it is, it is clearly more broad than law enforcement. Public safety, you know, could mean just feeling like you can you can spend the night without being, being harmed, you know, if you're a homeless person. Or it might mean not being yelled at when you're just walking down the street because of the way you look. You know, it, education is also part of it, and that is also one of the, one of the duties to, to reach out to the broader community and talk about what public safety means to different people. So I will leave it to my co-sponsors to, to respond as well, but definitely broader than, than law enforcement.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. I'll ask a question now. Earlier in your presentation, you used the term legitimacy with regards to it being part of city code. And I guess my question to you is, is it your position or the sponsors or writers of this ordinance that a commission is considered to be more legitimate than a focus group or a task force? I'm not so sure I was clear on what that meant. Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, go ahead.
Um, excuse me. I, I meant legitimacy in that if we make it a commission, it's in the Bloomington Municipal Code. It is part of our laws that govern our city. So that, to me, has a higher level of commitment by the city to this commission, to this entity, than creating a task force, which is a temporary body, or a focus group, which is a reactionary body, which you're just asking them, hey, what do you think about this idea? So, yeah, in that sense, that's the way I was using the term legitimacy.
Okay, another question I have from that approach. And in previous conversations, when comparing a commission to a focus group or a task force, the comment was made that with a focus group or task force, then the city representatives, meaning the city council and administration, can choose to listen or not take it or leave it. And I guess my question is, if that's the viewpoint of a focus group or task force, how does that change being a commission? Councilmember Flaherty?
I don't think it does. And just to clarify from my own perspective as well as a co-sponsor, I don't, I don't see resident feedback or input from our constituents as any more or less legitimate, whether it's coming from a task force, focus group, or commission. I think all feedback that we hear from our constituents is very legitimate, obviously, and that we should be taking into consideration. And likewise, I think to the extent that the advice or recommendations from a focus group or task force is something that the council could take or leave, that is also true of the advice or recommendations from a commission, as we've kind of discussed earlier. So I don't think, at least from my, my perspective, I didn't intend to suggest that we would more easily disregard feedback or, or recommendations from one, one type of body versus another. I think my perspective on why a commission is, is a better fit was sort of highlighted in, in the slides and the presentation from Councilmember Piedmont Smith, having to do a little bit with the nature of the task and probably the evolution of, of what this body could, could look at over time and the potential for it to, you know, last for, for some years, you know, if it's the will of this council, to review outcomes and results of any programs or policy changes and evaluate that over time. So I just think as a kind of structural matter, commission is, is what makes the most sense to me, but I don't think of that as, as you know, more legitimate, I guess, is maybe not the word I would use, but that helps.
Thank you. We're just looking for clarification on part of the conversations that have been held earlier. And I guess my last question, and whomever can choose to answer this one, with regard to recommendations, sorry, recommendations to the city council or administration or a city body. If those recommendations are based in solid foundational research, best practices, other examples, and those recommendations came via a focus group or a task force, are they considered to be looked upon the same as a commission would be, or less so? Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Well, as far as a focus group, I think by its definition, a focus group would not come up with recommendations. A focus group is a body that you take an idea to and ask them what they think about it. So I don't think an original recommendation would come from a focus group. Certainly, I would take seriously any recommendations that would come from a group comprised of people that have been disenfranchised in our community and are particularly affected by public safety concerns, just like Councilmember Flaherty said. But as to your specific question, I think a focus group would probably not come up with a suggestion or a recommendation, task force or commission, I mean, they would both, either one, you know, provided a recommendation, I would look at it seriously. either one, you know, provided a recommendation, I would look at it seriously.
Thank you. Councilmember Scambler. Councilmember Scambler. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. Would the focus of this commission also extend to other parts of the system? For, for instance, our shelter organizations, Beacon, Shalom, Wheeler, Center Stone, or other mental health facilities that also facilitate, monitor and produce housing? Again, I'm trying to get the scope of where the focus of this, this research and these recommendations are going to be all about, because again, I see the issues being so much broader than the city of Bloomington alone. I see that we've got some, you know, some, some huge problems, and it's not just here in Bloomington or in the county of Monroe, it's all across the nation, that I'm just trying to get a, a sense of, of the, of the ultimate purpose of this group and, and what they intend to, excuse me, in terms of how we solve these, these really insurmountable problems. I mean, and my question is coming from a place where I'm observing that many of our community ills that obviously are, are affecting these marginalized groups that you are hoping to give a voice to. Those, those needs are growing and our ability, our resources to manage them, and I'm not just talking about BPD, I'm talking about our parks systems, I'm talking about our mental health providers, you know, the Stride Center is stepping up, it's a relatively new entity, but certainly much appreciated resource. But again, give me an idea of your scope. Who else is going to be looked at as part of the solution here?
Councilmember Flaherty, go ahead, sorry.
Sure. No, I appreciate this line of questions from, from Councilmember Sandberg. I think it's, it, it highlights the very expansive nature of public safety problems. There's a whereas clause in the ordinance that, that echoes the sentiments former police chief of Dallas made, and we've heard from other, you know, many, many other police officers over time, including Chief DeKoff, which is essentially that the police are handling a lot of things that they were never meant to handle and that they are not necessarily well-suited to handle. And that certainly looking at non-police alternatives for helping folks in our community who are struggling with one issue or another is, would be part of the purview, but I think looking at root causes of what causes those insecurities is, is part of what the aim is here. But I think, you know, I, it's inappropriate at this time to really specifically or narrowly define the scope of what this group would look at. And so, so the, I think the perceived ambiguity, ambiguity is certainly granted. You know, that there is some ambiguity, but, but that's by design. The hope is to get, get a lot of folks at the table, as convened by city government, to help provide perspective from their lived experience, from people they work with in the community, and, and really develop a better understanding of what are the gaps in our current social, social services ecosystem? What are the best ways that we locally in Bloomington? And granted, again, these are bigger regional and national problems in many respects, and there's things that we can't control, but, but we do control things here in Bloomington. So I think a group like this would, would help to identify what gaps there are, what types of policies, again, as modeled, evidence-based policies from other cities that we could look at to add to the things we're doing to address gaps in our public safety, to try to address some of the racially and socio-economically unjust outcomes we have in that context. So I think the structure and, and how they will approach problems and who we're trying to, whose perspective we're trying to bring to city government is, is the important part. And I think, you know, by design, again, there's some, there's some open question as to what exactly the focus will be, and that will, you know, the group itself will need to define that. So I think it's not our intent to narrowly or very explicitly define exactly what that will look like at this time.
Thank you. Further.
I think Kate Rosenbarger had her hand up.
I don't see. Go ahead, Kate, I'm sorry, sorry, I missed it. Councilmember.
I'm sorry, I know I'm, I'm causing problems tonight, thank you for being patient with me. I just wanted to add there that I, I would say I agree that there are problems, you know, here in Bloomington and just across the country that seem insurmountable, but I think we can make measurable impact and improvement by listening and responding step by step and sometimes, or most of the time, it, it just takes a long time and it is about incremental change. And that I, I think we have to start somewhere, and currently I feel like we're not leveraging the direct knowledge and experience that the target population for membership have. And so it's really important that we bring them in, in a way that we can hear them and that it's sort of like they have insider information that we aren't privy to, but that if we can hear that and use it, we can all make these steps to make an impact. That's it.
Thank you, and I'll try to keep an eye out on your hand raised. Thank you. Any more questions from our colleagues? Okay, I have one more. The writing and forming of those two, I'm sponsor this CAPS Commission, and it's been part of our conversation, and it was intended to give a voice to, I think, I'll quote the voiceless and some of the marginalized folks and other populations in our community. But one of the discussions is that there was no members of any of these committees or communities, I'm sorry, populations, as part of the group that formulated this CAPS proposal. And as far as we could see, there were no black population involvement, no physical disabilities member of the population involved in the formation of this, no homeless person, for an example. And I guess my question would be just, what say you to that? Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure. Yeah, you know, Ms. Reese has made that criticism, and that she and I had an hour-long conversation about this, and I very much appreciate her perspective and, and and the conversation we had. And as Councilmember Pete Monmouth Smith said last week, I think in retrospect, in developing this, more outreach could have happened. In terms of developing or writing this legislation, it was primarily Councilmember Pete Monmouth Smith and Heather Lacy, council staff, who drafted the legislation. So I think from my perspective, this was about creating a tool or a mechanism, setting up a mechanism in order to gather input, something, something more formal than a committee meeting, you know, the Public Safety Committee meeting met twice this summer. So what led to me wanting to work on this and develop this was my conversations with many community members, I mean, hundreds of email exchanges, the comments we heard specifically at the Public Safety Committee meetings, and the probably 15 or 20 or so lengthier conversations I've had with community members on public safety issues over the last five or six months. Sometimes multiple conversations over, over multiple months, and the majority of those in conversation, of those conversations, at least from, for me, have been with BIPOC leaders in our community or just residents. And that has been central, along with looking at other marginalized voices who are reaching out to us, to motivating why I think this legislation needed to be written. So obviously, you know, of course I haven't, there, there are people I haven't spoken to and people I need to continue to, you know, meet and reach out to and learn from and hear from. So I, that's my perspective, is that this legislation was motivated by the many conversations I've had with community members and, and the many forms of feedback we've gotten from community members. Though again, certainly have reflected on, on the criticism that, that we've heard and, and am trying to, to continue to improve, improve on that in future development of policy and, and as well as in dealing with this. So that's, that's at least my perspective on, on that question. Thanks.
Thank you. Did I say your hand up, Councilmember Pete Monmouth Smith? No.
I think Councilmember Flaherty reflected my views on it as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions from camps or committee members? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Lucas. I think we're ready for public comment.
A point of order, Mr. Chairman.
So yes, go ahead, I'm sorry, I forgot about the amendment.
Yes, we have an amendment. I think now would be the time to bring forward the amendment.
Would agree. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I move Amendment One to ordinance 2020, and I think Mr. Lucas is going to do me the favor of displaying this on the screen, since we have learned that I am not very good at doing that.
Okay, and if it got, well, I think it needs to get a second before we do anything else. I think Councilmember Scambler has seconded. Can you verbalize that, please?
Yes, sorry, second.
You're fine, thank you. It's been moved in second from.
All right, so.
I'm sorry, before we move forward, Mr. Lucas, does that motion a second require a vote?
No, the motion is.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So I apologize that we didn't get this out to the public and to colleagues earlier, but it is rather simple. The amendment is to add Section Four, which says, "The need for and efficacy of the Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission shall be reviewed by the common council two years after the commission's first meeting." So this is largely in response to colleagues' concerns about having a long-term commitment to, to have this commission. So basically, this builds in a, a review process to see if it is still needed after it has done its work for two years.
I'm sorry, thank you. I think we can remove it from the, thank you very much. Councilmember Scambler.
Yes, thank you. So just so I'm understanding correctly, council would review it, we're not specifying a particular process by which that would happen. But if, if we decided there was a better venue or a better way of gathering this feedback, we would have to undo it and pass another ordinance, correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And if we decided it was being effective and working, we would essentially do nothing. And it would continue because it's in code. Is that correct?
Well, there is an interim option of revising this commission in code. You know, if, if the council, the majority of council feels like the commission is still worthwhile, but would like to tweak some aspect of it, you know, add two more members or something, then, then that would be an option as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lucas, what is proper? Do we take a poll on this motion? And it'll be part of the final due process recommendation? If it passes, correct?
Yes, so the due pass recommendation can include the ordinance as amended. I believe the committee typically goes to the public after any questions on the amendment are answered, and hears from, from the public on the amendment before.
You're absolutely.
Recommendation on the amendment.
You're absolutely correct, and that was amendment number one? Councilmember Pete Monmouth Smith, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now we'll go to public comment on Amendment One, and this is for the amendment that was just motioned and not the entire ordinance. So you can please indicate by using a raised hand function in chat or send us a note in chat.
I saw a number of hands raised that all just went down, and I assume folks were lining up to comment on the, the ordinance as a whole. But if, if there are folks who want to comment on the amendment, as Committee Chair Sims just mentioned, you can send a message via chat or raise your hand via Zoom. And I do see Jana Arthur, who should now be unmuted and ready to comment.
I'm sorry that I raised my hand, I was unable to lower it. I actually want to comment on the amendment at the whole. Can I comment at that time instead?
You can comment on the amendment, it's where we are now. When you say as a whole, do you mean the whole ordinance?
Yes, please, I would rather spend my time during the whole ordinance comments, I apologize for the mistake.
That's okay. We'll look forward to hearing from you in the proper time. Thank you. Is there none others? Okay. Do we go back to committee members for final comment before we take a poll on this amendment? Okay, do we have any comments from committee members on Amendment One? Okay, seeing none. And just to make sure I'm clear, Mr. Lucas, is this a due pass recommendation on Amendment One? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, are we ready for a due pass recommendation on Amendment One? And seeing that we are, we'll start from my left as I see them. Councilmember Pete Monmouth Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Scambler.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes.
And Councilmember Sims votes yes as well. Thank you. Now we'll, is it proper to go to public comment for the ordinance as a whole? Mr. Lucas? Okay, thank you. Now, that amendment passed, I'm sorry, was due pass recommendation four to zero, and we will now go to public comments as a whole on ordinance 20-17, 20-17, as amended. So I think we see some hands, Mr. Lucas.
Yes, the, the first request I actually received for a comment came from RM via chat, and she should now be unmuted and ready to comment.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes, can you pronounce or share with us your full name, please?
I'm Renee Miller.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the sponsors for presenting this, this ordinance tonight, and thank you, the council, for considering the public comments this evening. I misspoke during the committee meeting, during public comment two weeks ago, when I said others within the marginalized realm were not brought into discussion in, in forming this idea, because a few were. And for that, I apologize. So I apologize for that error, and I look forward to supporting, having a commission in which the voices of those who are often not heard can and will give options and gather data to share with common council for consideration. Here is hoping we all work together in bettering our Bloomington community in both access and equity, which will in turn lift up others in a way that will, in the long run, serve all of Bloomington's landscape in a positive way. The ones who will sit on this committee will have much to offer our community, and when people's voices are looked upon as important, not just heard, but important, we all perform with them. Over the years, I have been a successful business owner through several businesses over the years, one which was viable for over 15 years, and was a retail manager at several stores in Bloomington, as well as a layperson and administrator in both trade, building trades and healthcare, as well as vice president of a fire department board here in Bloomington. And in those roles, those roles taught me, when people's ideas and work are discarded, people fail, but when we incorporate those ideas and appreciate them, people thrive. Overall, systems thrive. Hopefully, these ideas brought to you by the commission will be seriously considered by this council. Overall, systems thrive. Hopefully, these ideas brought to you by the commission will be seriously considered by this council. I believe that having a commission with people whose voices are marginalized and nurture all of the community that will bring to light topics that others are unaware of due to different lived experiences and ideas for moving forward will be brought forth. We all become stronger and more successful when we understand one another fully. I am a marginalized voice in our community, and I have a duty to speak up and help others who are marginalized. I hope you all will do the same and vote to pass this amendment through this ordinance, and it will inevitably help people succeed and our community as a whole succeed far past the status quo. This is needed now more than ever. Thank you for your time this evening. I thrive, and I am one of these voices.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, I believe we have Vox Booker, who should be unmuted and ready to comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Booker. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. I appreciate you. Counselors, I appreciate you for taking this on. I understand that it is a difficult time, not only in Bloomington but throughout the nation. That being said, I think this is extremely important. There's the notion that black folks weren't involved in the beginning in creating this process. Frankly, you know, counselors, Flaherty, Scambler, Sandberg, all ran against marginalized people and our community, which includes black people, voted to make them the representatives. You are the voice that will speak for a multitude of people. I want to make sure that we aren't shirking any responsibilities to act. We can say that this is a national issue, but it's very much a local issue. Excuse me if my patience is short on this subject. Many of you understand why, but Bloomington is not a liberal Mecca. Our community has seen racist attacks, and I'm not just talking about myself. It's not the first or the third time that a racist incident has happened in Bloomington. Many of you have been counselors for years, and we haven't adequately taken this on. I understand that the mayor is doing a commission. I understand that the county is taking things, but we all need to make sure that we're putting all hands on deck to adequately tackle this social issue. We've had the Department of Justice step in and ask our community to move on this issue because we made national news over the last few years with racial incidents. I understand that some black folks will have issues with this, black people on monoliths. I may feel one way, someone else may feel another way. That's fine. But we need to make sure that we are doing everything we can as a community in every avenue available to us to move on this issue. It's not just the issue of policing. It's not just the issue of mental health. It's a whole intersectional problem that is going to take a myriad of people to solve. And that can't just be people who are appointed by the mayor. The mayor is just one individual. He, I believe he has the best interest in hurt, but he can only see things from his perspective. That's why we have a city council. You all have a diverse perspective, and we need all you folks to tap people in our community that you think would be good, strong leaders on this issue. So in closing, let me urge you in the strongest possible words that I can frame, to move on this measure. It should not be a question. We're not going to create too much equity and too much justice in our community. It's something that needs to be done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have Nicole Johnson.
She should be unmutated. Ms. Johnson, how are you?
Hi, thank you so much for your kind comments, Kate and Matt, and the kind voice that you brought to this conversation. And I'd like to amplify Mr. Booker's comments, especially about this being a local issue. It is indeed a local issue. I'd like to say a few things. Hopefully, I can get through this quickly. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, I'm Nicole Johnson, and I'm a resident of the Crestmont community, and I'm also on the board of our residents council. I'm on the residents council here at Bloomington House and Authority. I'm also the, I guess, director, if you want to call it that, the person who does most of the stuff behind the scenes with Pigeon Hill Pantry. And I am also a low-income single mother of four children, ranging from toddler to college age. And, you know, so I have a personal interest in ensuring that both our local housing community and the larger Bloomington community are secure for all of our residents, including our children and our elderly. I'd like to mention, I believe it was councilperson Sandberg asked about, I can't remember who said it. It was about the voices. My voice was specifically, I was, my opinion was asked by the people who drafted this. I was, I was questioned. I was approached, as were others, and I'm sure you'll hear that. Just so you do know that. And I have maybe not a physical disability, but I am disabled. If that needs, box needs to get checked off. And then, it's so also, there was like, Sandberg, I believe you said something about the scope, you know, and is this going to be just about police? Okay, so it's my understanding that public security. Okay, now, we're going to talk about security and safety a little bit. It's my understanding that public security is basically a function of our government, right? Okay, so the cumulative actions that they take ensure the safety of their community against threats, well-being, and prosperity of the community as a whole, whereas public safety is actually the planning aspect, right? The comprehensive public security plan. Economically insecure communities, or shall we say, in communities with high unemployment rates, have some public security issues that are distinct from those more mainstream, middle-income neighborhoods. Some of those current public security issues are, we're trying to address in the organizations that I am working with, among others up here, tons. I'm not going to get into a list or anything, but when it comes down to it, though you guys used a lot of words. I'd like to say that having a commission would indeed legitimize my voice. And it has nothing to do with money at all. It has to do with being heard, and it would be empowering. It would be. It would be empowering. And the idea between hard and soft power, well, how about, how about giving some marginalized voices any power? We don't really care what kind of power it is. So, yes, I would like, I really don't understand why this is even a question with the state of the nation. And I do want to mention that while, yes, this is a national problem, but the problem is so immense, councilperson Sandberg, that all we can do is focus on city ordinance, which is what this commission would do. So, you know, I truly thank you guys all for your time and everybody's work who went in writing this and everybody who stood up today to give it support. And I am done. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I will remind the public that you can have public comment by raising your hand and by using the chat, I'm sorry, the raised hand function in Zoom or sending us a message in chat. And something that I neglected to say earlier is that each member of the public will have five minutes to speak. So who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have Danielle Byrd, who should now be unmuted and ready to comment.
Thank you. My name is Domiel Byrd, and I'm a social worker. I've been in the community since 1988. I hope that doesn't give away my age. But I support this proposed ordinance to create the CAPS Commission. And I also want to remind the council members that there was a petition that was signed by over 150 people that was submitted to every council member via email and the mayor back in, I believe it was late September. And as a part of that petition, there was support from all of the people that signed it for this commission. So it was a part of that, that letter. So, and several of the folks who signed the petition are members of marginalized groups. I do know that to be true. So I just see this as such a great opportunity to widen the scope of study regarding community safety. And it's always good to gather more voices from community members we might not otherwise hear from. I see this as a complementary but unique to the other efforts that are already underway to address public safety. And I also want to speak to the issue of a commission as opposed to a focus group or task group. As someone who educates college students about anti-oppressive community interventions, I teach about community-based participatory research. This research is completed by those who are directly impacted and the most marginalized. And part of that research is not just talking about what the problems are, but it's also identifying strengths of the community and what are the barriers to folks achieving their goals and of safety. So, as a social worker practicing for many years, I can tell you that I thought I knew what was best for a lot of the folks I serve, or I thought, you know, I'd give them a list of referrals, and I'd learn from them that actually, there were a number of barriers for them to even access the services that we were having. I also participated in gathering voices for the transportation study that we did here a few years back and learned a lot about public transportation, things that I didn't know. So I just think there's nothing better than to hear directly from the people that are the most impacted. And one focus group and one short-term task group is not going to gather the information that we need to make substantive change. So there's many examples of participatory research in regards to community safety that have taken place. I've done the research about these. I teach these to my students. But these have been taken place among LGBTQ folks, college students, people who use drugs, people with mental health challenges, et cetera. And this type of information gathering is very empowering as the information gathered and the recommendations from the findings are controlled by the people themselves, by the Nicole Johnson. I want to hear her voice. I want to hear Jana Arthur's voice. I want to hear, you know, variety of people's voices that are out there in the community and what they're experiencing. And this leads to more effective solutions, and it avoids those common pitfalls when the professionals, however well-intentioned, create interventions that end up being ineffective at best and oppressive at worst. However, this type of work takes time and support. Relationships need to be developed among commission members. Adequate time needs to be allowed for gathering information, collaboration, and time for reflection. The support of a staff member or another designated person to keep notes and provide technical support is also key. So focus groups and task force groups do not allow enough time for that. And we need a high level of participation for this to be successful. So for this reason, I believe a commission would be the best approach. I'm very excited about this proposal and the possibilities it could bring for a more safe and civil Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd. Who do we have next?
Next up, we have Jana Arthur, who should now be unmuted and ready to comment.
Ms. Arthur, you ready?
Um, can you guys hear me okay? My audio is bad.
Yes.
Okay, so when Sue spoke at the beginning, she asked how this CAP Commission, it's not a commission, it's an advisory group because it's the Community Advisory Group, and how the Community Advisory Group would help if there were no money attached to it. I wanted to start off by saying I ain't got no money attached to me and my, you know, my name was just mentioned as someone that can empower, so I am being empowered right now, and I am doing the work right now. So, and also, focus groups, like, all these voices that are going to come in the minutes that they have been given are going to say things as well. And what this does is it's going to give me validity to the professionals that are failing in order to exercise my skill set to meet needs in the community, because I have these needs. And I want to say that I do have a prepared statement, and I'm, since my voice needs to be heard, I would like to finish my own thoughts, and then I would like to read my prepared statement. I just ran for office and I didn't win, and it's cool that I'm still doing these sorts of things despite the fact that to some, it may only look like my disability is that I'm a woman, but I'm also poor. I was born in a one-room house. And that poverty and lack of employment, as someone just spoke of, led to some pretty complex PTSD, mental health issues. And that makes it hard to keep employment and do work for bigger causes. So thank you to everyone who has worked and done the work for me to legitimize my voice. Someone spoke on hard and soft power, and thank you for giving me the power to speak. So now I'm going to find my prepared statement, and I will read that. So I do the work in the community. I do work closely with the homeless community in Bloomington in various ways to help them meet their needs, whatever they are, but specifically related to safety. Safety in the homeless community has a lot of issues, and why people do not understand about these issues is they are happening all at once. It's not like I lost my wallet and my phone quit working. It's like that stuff is going on, but I also have a super-high baseline level of issues, and these are the issues that all these other voices are going to speak on. And when you have a lot going on, such as exposure, insect bites, dehydration, hunger. And a big problem with hunger is that sometimes it's just really hard to make the time that you are supposed to go receive services and not just because of everything that is going on. So it's a really calm, each issue is really complex. You may also be facing insect bites, untreated exacerbated health issues such as infections. You may be dealing with these as well while experiencing mental health issues. As we detailed in our letter to council members and the mayor, we have already created several health and safety-related services to keep our members as safe as possible. Today, I want to tell you about something that happened just this past week. I saw an employee of a business helping a man who was hit by a car. I stopped to see if I could help, and I found out that the young man was having a, hang on, I lost my place, mental health crisis, likely a panic attack. As someone who also lives with mental health challenges, I knew that I could help calm him down with empathy and patience and also coping skills, like, dude, I have no problem. I can help this man in like two minutes if the professionals just back me up and legitimize me. That's what I'm thinking in my head. However, the employee, before I had arrived, I called 911 and attempted to help the young man. The EMTs and police were trying to force the young man into the ambulance while the man repeatedly said that he did not want to go. And what none of, why people don't realize about this incident is that he had stated so many times that he did not feel safe, and he even asked for a safe place to go that wasn't an ambulance or a cop car. And like, I had to try to get to this new job that I found because I'm trying to pay for somebody's rent so they're not homeless, like. Anywho, that got me off track for my statement. I'm gonna find my place.
You have about 30 seconds, Ms. Arthur.
I'll just give you the rest of it. I'm sorry I ran out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Sorry, next up, we have Lisa Paduka, who should be muted and ready to comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hello, go ahead. You have five minutes.
Hi. So, back to kind of the conversation about parameters and scope and legitimacy earlier, I was just, I was listening pretty closely to that part, just because, I mean, and first, actually, to echo the sentiment of Vox Booker, yes, there should not be a question as to whether this is necessary. And sort of my concerns lie with making sure that this commission is taken seriously. And I know that part of being a commission is that it's more about gathering information and making sure that everyone is heard from, but that it also needs to be followed up with tangible action. And so I know that, again, part of the nomenclature of being a commission means that it's not based on finances and putting things into, into actual practice. But at the same time, it would be nice to know that this commission, because it's talking about such an urgent issue and especially one that disproportionately affects black and brown folks, it would be really nice to know that this commission has tangible power over finances in some way, or at least that it could work perhaps like tangentially with the, oh, sorry, I forgot to bring up the name. I'm just pulling, I took a photo of the, of Isabel P. Mon Smith's file earlier, of the Board of Public Safety. I mean, it seems to me, okay, so yes, the Board of Public Safety specifically oversees police and fire department. And I agree that the scope of this commission needs to be broader than that. But in terms of the amount of power that the Board of Public Safety has, considering the urgency of the issue, I'm wondering if in the near future we could expand this commission to have a similar level of power. Because although it's not as focused of an issue, I think it is just as urgent and needs to have power over the way money is handled. And then just, that's my main point. And then just a quick, again, nomenclature thing. I just couldn't help but notice that the abbreviation for this is CAPS, the Community Advisory Board and Public Safety Commission. And just that it might be a little bit confusing that IU also has a CAPS, which is the Counseling and Psychological Services. Again, I know that you guys are not entirely related with IU being, you know, the city. But as a recent IU student, that stuck out to me that you have the exact same name as something that already has an acronym at IU. And just that, you know, if there ever is community confusion in the future, that you're aware that there is something else that's already called CAPS that is, you know, about psychological services, but also definitely a different thing. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Padoka. Who do we have next, Ms. Lucas?
Next up, we have Mary By Bescovich, who should be unmuted and ready to comment.
Go ahead, please. You have, go ahead. You have five minutes.
Thank you for the time to speak. I appreciate you listening to this proposal and considering it. I am a local. I was born here in Bloomington. I've been here 44 years. The last 20 years of which I've spent working in social services, the last 12 years as a master's level social worker. And I've worked with a lot of different people. I've worked with people with severe mental illness at Centerstone. I've worked at Middleway House with domestic violence survivors. I've worked on the psychiatric units of Bloomington Hospital. I've worked as a medical social worker with IU Health Hospice and Home Health. And so I feel like I've talked to a lot of people in that time. And one thing that I think is true about our social welfare system is that there are these huge gaps in which people fall through the cracks. And when they fall through the cracks, the only thing left for them is interactions with law enforcement. Because if they're in the community and they're having struggles because of chaotic drug and alcohol use or mental health issues, it's law enforcement that responds. And so I think we, as a community, we really need to be looking at better ways to serve people because having law enforcement respond is not a very good way of serving people. And it's caused a lot of problems. And I think it must be really hard for officers too, to be having to deal with issues that they're not trained to deal with. And how could they be? There's, there are too many, too many. So I think that having a commission that could research different ways to meet the needs of people with mental health issues who are experiencing domestic violence that are not law enforcement officers coming to the scene could be really valuable for the community. I think it could make a huge difference in people's lives. And I think it could be much more effective and, you know, potentially help people get on stable ground so that they're not having to deal with these things over and over and over again. You know, I'd like to say on a, on a personal note that, you know, I had worked at Middleway House. I had worked with people with severe mental illness. But it wasn't until I found myself in a marriage where somebody had a mental health issue that had really progressed and become really severe that I truly understood the challenges of living with mental illness and truly understood the challenges of being a survivor or a victim at the time of domestic violence. And I don't think, even though I talked to many, many people in that same situation, I don't think I really understood those issues until I actually experienced them. And so I, I think it's so important that we bring the voices of people who are actively experiencing these things to the table to find out what would be helpful and that we really try to work as a community to close these holes in our social service network so that we can really be serving people. Because that's what we're here to do, right? We're here to serve people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Ms. Lucas?
Next, we have Daniel Bingham, who should now be ready to comment.
Good evening, Mr. Bingham. Go ahead. You have five minutes, please.
Thank you. I wanted to add to the comments that have come before me, my support for this commission and just to add some stats about how thoroughly our current public safety system is failing people. And the degree to which, you know, it isn't constructed to succeed. I went through the Indiana Police Academy website and found essentially a course syllabus, a course of training, that pretty clearly showed the exact training officers who go through the academy get. I mean, it was an hour-by-hour class schedule, essentially. And I went through it and I tallied up what each class was in. About half of it was combat training. It was firearms. It was vehicle usage. It was, you know, hand-to-hand combat tactics. It was tactics and strategies and combat training. Most of the other half of it was criminal law and some of that was like forensics and trying to track crime down. There was very little, there was no social work in it. There was very little psychology. There were about two hours of psychology in it. There were about two hours of de-escalation training in it. Very little on mental health, nothing on homelessness, very little on, on race relations or race-specific issues, no kind of anti-bias training. I mean, it was, it was combat and criminal law. That course of training, I think it was a, this is a number that is not coming back to head and mind immediately, but it was essentially, it could fit in half a semester. So these are the people we are asking to enforce the law. They're receiving less than half a semester of education in the law. They are receiving less than half a semester of training in combat and little else. Keep in mind, it takes two to three years to get a law degree. So to practice the law and argue the law, we ask you to spend two to three years of training to enforce it, you spend less than half a semester. The effect of this is that we aren't doing a good job of solving crime. If you look at national clearance rates, the rates at which criminal cases are cleared with an arrest, it's about 50% for violent crime and about 17% or 18% for property crime. We're not successfully solving crime. We are not, if you look at how our officers in Bloomington are spending their time, only about 15 to 20% of their time is spent on crime. The thing they do receive, they're somewhat paltry training in. It's like 10 to 15 is on property crime and about 5% is on violent crime. The rest of their time is spent on traffic. It's spent on social work. It's spent on homelessness response. It's spent on addiction response. It's spent on solving domestic disputes of the non-violent sort. It's spent on day-to-day arguments or ordinance enforcement, things that do not require combat training, that do not require an armed paramilitary officer, but that do require training in mediation and dispute resolution and social work and trauma response and addiction and mental health and all these things that they have zero training in. Most of their time is spent on things they are not trained to deal with. And that, in fact, the training they do receive uniquely ill-equipped them to deal with it. The very least we can do is recognize this problem and put together a group to start solving it, which is what this commission is aimed to do. And I would like to note one more thing. There were the, the comment about how this is a massive national problem, which granted, I was dealing with a seventh month, seventh, seven-month-old pup and listening with one ear, but to my ear was, was stated as a, as a way to say this is beyond our ability to solve. My job is to solve problems in a complex system. I'm a software engineer. It's what, it's what we deal with. Systems that get more, so complex, we can't imagine them. So we have to figure out how to solve problems in them. And the way you solve-
We have about a minute, Mr. Bingham. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. The way, the way you solve a problem in a complex system is you break it down into smaller pieces and you address those pieces individually. And the aggregate of those solutions solves the bigger problem. National problems do not exist in a vacuum. They are the aggregate creation of local problems. You solve them by breaking them down into their local problems and solving the local ones. And that's what we need to do here with public safety.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bingham.
Next up, we have Molly Stewart, who should now be unmuted.
Hi, thank you. I actually want to read the end of Jana Arthur's story that she ran out of time. So I'm just gonna start at the beginning of the story because I think that will be easier. So I'm gonna read this from her perspective because it's a statement she wrote. "As I was driving home, I noticed an employee of a local business helping another man who had hit a telephone pole with his car. I stopped to see if I could help and found out that the young man was having a mental health crisis, likely a panic attack. As someone who also lives with mental health challenges, I knew that I could help calm him down with empathy and patience. However, the employee, before I had arrived, had called 911 in an attempt to help the young man. The EMTs and the police were trying to force the young man into the ambulance while the man repeatedly said that he did not want to go. I began advocating for him and supporting his choice not to go in the ambulance. He was having a mental health crisis and had committed no crime other than a small traffic accident with no injuries to himself or others. One police officer searched his car without a warrant, even though there was no probable cause that any crime had been committed. I videotaped this part of the incident. The police seemed to become frustrated that someone was advocating for his rights, including his right to choose not to go to the hospital in an ambulance. The man finally did agree to go to the hospital in the police car, but it is my belief that he was coerced to go verbally and said of his wishes being respected. He had been talking to his mother on the phone before the police arrived and she came to be with him later. There was no need for the EMTs or police to behave in any coercive manner or to treat me, an advocate for my fellow community member, as an adversary. This incident underscores the need for community assistance with safety that is whole-person centered and not law enforcement-centered. And I truly believe that the CAPS Commission is designed to ultimately address that need through rigorous collection of information from many of our community members who have the highest needs in terms of safety. My experiences with the homeless community, community members with mental health challenges, including myself, and experiences with community members experiencing substance abuse and addiction without a doubt point to the need for this kind of commission and voice in the city for people whose needs continue to not be met in ways that are respectful of them as individuals, as humans, and as our neighbors. Thank you."
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Stewart.
That was Jana's, Jana Arthur's statement, not my own.
Yes, thank you. Do you have anything else? I'm sorry. You still have a couple of minutes left if you have anything else. Okay, who do we have next, Ms. Lucas?
Next up, we have Deborah, who should be unmuted and ready to comment.
Hi, I'm Deborah Morrow. Oh, am I unmuted? Okay. I'm Deborah Morrow and I want to thank everyone tonight who identifies as marginalized and brought their voice to the table because their voices are the most important voices tonight. While I was sitting here tonight, listening to all the comments and questions, one thought went through my head as I thought about all of the other meetings about this topic. And the question was, did we have to think so long before we decided to create a parking commission? And I also want to point out, why do we even have to think about welcoming marginalized voices to the table? We should welcome them without hesitation and we should recognize that they are experts at their own lives and we're gonna get the best information from them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Morrow. Who do we have next, Ms. Lucas?
I don't see any other requests for new comments.
Okay. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak this evening? We like to make sure everyone gets an opportunity to speak this evening if they so choose. I think, Mr. Lucas, hang on just for a sec. I think it was Ms. Johnson who I, what, wasn't clear at the beginning that she had five minutes. And if there's no other public comment at this time, we could allow her another 60 seconds to finish her comment. I think that would be proper.
Yes.
Are you on, Ms. Johnson?
I'm here. All I wanted, I am, I'm here. Thank you so much for that moment. Just-
Please, please go ahead. Thank you. Sorry.
Oh, okay. I just want to use my 60 seconds. All I wanted to point out was that I made a point between public security and, and public safety, and I wanted to make a mention that public security is broken down into a bunch of different types of security. And I just wanted to like list those off on the record. And that would be food security, health security, political security, environmental security. Oh my goodness, neighborhood security, economic security and personal security. Or I said community, neighborhood, I meant community security. So yes, personal security and, and community security would have something to do with, with the police. But I believe that this commission would indeed be much broader than that. Thank you so much for my additional time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Do we have anyone else, Ms. Lucas?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, I guess I should say, do we have anyone else going once? You can use the raised hand function in the Zoom format or you can send us a message in chat. Going twice. Any takers, Ms. Lucas? Okay, thank you. We'll now go back to committee members for final comments. Councilmember Scambler.
As President Sims, just to frame my statement, several members of the public asked, rightfully so, you know, why isn't this a slam dunk? And, you know, why isn't this just simple? And for me, it isn't simple because I'm trying to think about the system of resources and the system of groups. We do have other groups and what I still have questions about in my head is how they will work together. I noticed Beverly Callender Anderson was- I noticed Beverly, Callender Anderson was on this call. I don't know if she's still there. But I know she is the city's point for the racial equity task force and the future policing. And I would be interested in her feedback on how this group could support those groups, how those groups could work with this group and what that could look like. I would just be interested in her impressions and may I have your permission to direct that question to her?
Um, I, she doesn't volunteer for public comment or anything, so I'm not so sure that would be proper this evening. If she would indicate so as we move forward, and I think so.
She just unmuted.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still on the call and, and I'm fine if it's okay with you.
Yes, it is. Thank you. I just didn't want to involve you if you were just listening. So thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Scambler. You're on, Ms. Callender Anderson.
Okay, Councilmember Scambler, can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Several members of the public, I think rightfully asked, you know, why isn't this a simple decision? Why isn't this easy? And I can only comment from my perspective. For me, it's not easy because I am trying to think of this as a system of multiple, with multiple activities and multiple groups going on at the same time. And I'm trying to think in my head about how they can work together and support each other and what that could look like. Is there any, are there any concerns we have? And I was just wondering, you're the city's point person for the racial equity task force and for future policing, the two groups that were recommended. I would just be interested in your take on all these groups work together, how they might, how they might bump into each other.
Well, I, yeah, in, in my opinion, I do think there will be some overlap, especially with the, probably with both, but especially with the future of policing task force. And I understand that, you know, the, the CAPS planners are, are looking at this in something broader than policing. However, every time someone talked about it, they talked about public safety from a, from a, from a, an aspect of policing, you know, from, from a policing point of view and what's missing with policing or what police aren't trained to do or what. I mean, so, so policing keeps coming up. I, I think that the information gathered, I mean, if, if, if there is going to be information gathering, if there's going to be research done, some of that being fed into the future of policing task force would probably be good and, and prevent both entities from having to do the same research because certainly we would be looking at some of the same things. Having some of those voices, I mean, certainly the future of policing task force, as well as the racial justice task force is looking to have minoritized and marginalized voices as part of their makeup as well, but, but not solely their makeup. So there will be, is at the table, but you know, to increase the, the range of those voices would be great as well. That, I mean, so, so yeah, the crossover is there. I think that there are ways that, that we can be very complimentary. I, I would hope that we are not going to be duplicating efforts because then I feel like we would be not using our residents' time effectively. But if we, if, if this actually happens to pass, if this happens to pass and becomes a commission, I, I hope that it would be complimentary and that we could work together as opposed to being in competition either for membership or, you know, just repeating some of the same steps. Even sharing, I think sharing goals and sharing direction would be a great idea. So we know, you know, where we're heading.
Thank you.
Is that, is that what you needed, what, what you were looking for? Thank you.
Okay, we're still on final comments. Councilmember Scambler, were you?
Um, I'm going to sleep for a minute and think about that. Maybe come back.
Thank you. Councilmember Pete Moss Smith.
Um, I would, I am not ready to make my final comments, but I would like the opportunity respectfully to also answer Councilmember Scambler's question. I don't think that Ms. Callender Anderson, although I appreciate her chiming in, I don't think she is the only one who can speak to how these different entities might work together.
I would allow that. Councilmember Scambler asked specifically for Ms. Callender Anderson. So I don't think it was a slide on her part, but please feel free to continue.
No, hers was just a voice we hadn't heard yet this evening.
No, 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 that's fine. Councilmember Pete Moss Smith, go ahead, please.
Yes, um, from the written proposal that I've seen for the future policing task force and the conversations I've had with Ms. Callender Anderson and a few other people who've been working on that task force. It is very much focused on law enforcement and it will have representation from law enforcement. It also will be more than just the city of Bloomington as it will out, reach out to county and their law enforcement, you know, the sheriff's office and IU Police Department and maybe other law enforcement agencies. So even though Ms. Callender Anderson said that, you know, police keeps coming up, I want to emphasize first of all that, although I appreciate Mr. Bingham's comments, that's, that was not the, the impetus for this, for this proposal was not, was not that we felt that the Bloomington Police Department had inadequate training. That's not really the focus here. The focus is how can we best improve public safety? We do not feel like policing is the only answer or, or maybe even the best answer. We, the sponsors and the individuals who have worked on this proposal, often public safety can best be attained through other means. And those other means may be, you know, better mental health care, better connections to food resources or housing resources. Better understanding between the people who are trying to help disenfranchised individuals and the individuals themselves. You know, better transition teams to help people who have come out of, of jail. You know, this is not all about police. And so that broad view is really an essential part of the CAPS proposal. And the fact that we would like to have people who have those lived experiences, as we, as we heard the public repeatedly say this evening, those are the people that can best guide us to, to make a more safe public space for, for everybody, especially the most vulnerable. So I think that certainly it is not our intent to, to duplicate work. It is not our intent to disqualify anything anybody else does. As Mr. Booker said, this is a huge problem, public safety. And so we need all hands on deck, as he said. We need to hear many voices and have many people working on the issue. Of course, I assume that they will talk to each other, these different entities. And another thing I just wanted to address because it came up earlier in earlier conversations is why don't we have law enforcement on the CAPS Commission? And I think it's very important to have a body that does not have somebody from law enforcement and does not have somebody, you know, in a position of power in, in the public safety arena because we don't want to stifle the ideas and the feedback we get from people. And I think that is a really, we're, a, a real concern if we were to have law enforcement on the CAPS Commission. So, so again, I, I feel like it's a very different perspective, but a necessary perspective and another group that can add to our progress to create a safer community.
Thank you. Remind committee members, we are in final comment. So are you prepared, Councilmember Pete Moss Smith, to continue on?
I would prefer to wait, if I may.
Councilmember Scambler, did you?
I'm still thinking. I can offer comments if you like, if no one else wants to go, I can offer some comments.
Well, just, just reminding everyone, we're in final comment phase. Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes, I'm still thinking as well. Many things have been said tonight that actually have not helped, but have actually raised a few more concerns. So I'm going to hold my comments tonight and do further reflection. I may reach out to some people who have made comments that, that I want to seek further clarification about before this comes to council as a whole. But so tonight I will be passing as I reflect and think about, I cannot agree more that we need all hands on deck. I could not agree more with Mr. Booker in that regard. And that's why I'm hopeful that this group could be in some way incorporated to some of the larger efforts that are already underway with respect to mental illness in our community and the addiction problems that, that we face that are growing and our, our people experiencing homelessness, a whole array of issues that the city of Bloomington is already attempting to address within our means. And there is no one who is saying this problem is so big that we can't take steps to improve it. My position is that is already underway in the city of Bloomington, largely because of Beverly Callender Anderson's great work with community and family resources. Of course, her vast experience being Safe and Civil City Director. The incredible staff that we have at the city of Bloomington that are partnering with the people who put together the Stride Center, our contribution along with the county to get the women's shelter back open as the winter months approach. We are really a, 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 a community that does care. There is not a single one of us on this committee and on the city council that is not well aware of the voiceless and the many people that for a variety of reasons can't come to meetings and don't come to us. But it is our responsibility, as Ms. Reese said last time, for us to do the outreach into those communities. And we do that by relying on our great nonprofit leaders. I'm looking at Deborah Morrow from Middleway. I'm looking at the partnerships that we have with a good number of mental health providers and social service providers. This is not a city that does not care. And so I want to make that clear as I again do further thinking and reflection about, is this a good use of our city staff with respect to all the other efforts that are underway to, to address these many, many issues that no one is saying is not important or that we're trying to say it's so big, let's give up. That is not the Bloomington I know and love, and that's not the Bloomington that I will continue to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandberg. Councilmember Scambler.
Yes, I'm back. Thank, thank you. This is what I've been sorting and thinking about all this time. This has been a really interesting discussion to listen to and I am grateful for every single person who has offered their thoughts tonight. As I listen to it, I think there are some things we agree on. And that at its most fundamental level is the critical need to be more intentional and more consistent in engaging those traditionally underrepresented voices that we've heard about tonight. I'm going to say that again. We all agree, or so it seems to me, in the critical need to be more intentional and consistent in engaging traditionally underrepresented voices. Now, where do we differ or where are there still questions? I, I'm still a little bit troubled by the assumption that council might not listen unless we make this a commission. I promise you, I will listen to these voices regardless of what label we stick on this group or whether or not we have a group. I think that the assumption that the only way to do that is to create a commission troubles me. I received an email earlier today from an individual who's actually on this call and she supported this commission, that she had, there was an interesting line in her email that struck me. Until I was a professional social worker out talking with vulnerable members of the community, I had no idea how many obstacles are thrown into a person's path. What we're essentially asking people to do is come and buy into the model that's proposed here. Come buy into our model. And I, I was very struck by her choice of words that maybe the best feedback we get is when we go out to these groups, not when we form something. And I think as, as Ms. Reese said last week, when we build a table and invite people to it. Never complain without offering some kind of alternative or some kind of solution. So at some point, what I would be interested in exploring is council member assignments as liaison roles to different groups. We have appointments to the Chamber of Commerce and the liaison to downtown Bloomington and the liaison to a lot of different groups. Why couldn't we have one to the Bloomington Homeless Coalition? Why couldn't we have one to those groups that serve people experiencing domestic violence? Why couldn't we do that? Are we busy? Yes, the whole planet is busy. So I, I kind of reject the notion that gosh, council members are all just too busy. I have a day job too. But why couldn't we in, in, why couldn't we meet these groups in their setting rather than building our own setting? I would also like to see really clear, really intentional outreach to traditionally underrepresented groups when we fill our current boards and commissions. And again, I, someone made, took, took my comment regarding money to mean that I was talking about individuals who had. Is the power to actually move money and move resources around. So I would like to see that. I still have questions and I still have people I want to talk with. And so I'm going to be passing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Scambler. Councilmember Pete Moss Smith.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for your thoughts on this important issue. I feel like this commission would help me and all of us on city council and elected to serve the residents of Bloomington to do our jobs. Our job is to represent the people and to do everything we can to improve the community. And this community, as far as public safety, needs improvement. We've heard that from many people. The, the CAPS Commission would let people have a, have a way to, to have their voices heard and to let us know from their own perspective how we can do better. And that's really what this is all about. So I really, I'm just baffled. I do not understand my colleagues when they say, yes, those voices are valuable. Yes, we want to hear those voices. Then why don't you give them this venue to let them express their views and research what they think is important and come up with their own models? Councilmember Scambler, you said, you know, we're, we're making them buy into our model. No, this commission is purposely, doesn't say, we want you to do A, B, and C and implement this and that. No, we're saying, ask people in your demographic cohorts how to improve things. Let us know what your ideas are. That was very purposeful in our CAPS Commission proposal. We are not proposing the model. We are not telling them what to do. We want to hear genuinely from people with lived experience. And then also coming to Councilmember Sandberg's point that we have very many very gifted leaders in our social service agencies. Yes, they are, I agree. They're wonderful people doing excellent work, but we want to hear from people with lived experience. Just like the, the individual who wrote to us, and I think that Councilmember Scambler cited this, who said, you know, until I was a social worker and went out and talked to these people, I had no idea about all the roadblocks in their way. Yeah, that's why we need to talk to those people and not the social workers who haven't, or not the, you know, the people who are just getting it secondhand. We need people who live it every day, whether it is, you know, being in a racial minority, being in a gender minority or, or a socioeconomic minority, whatever it is. We want those voices, those experiences guiding this, guiding the recommendations of the CAPS Commission. Because Councilmember Sandberg said, you know, this work is already being done. Well, first of all, I'd like to say that I didn't know anything about the task force on the future of policing until after this proposal was already substantiated. on the Future of Policing until after this proposal was already substantively drafted and I reached out to Beverly Callender Anderson to get some feedback on it. And that it was only then that I learned about their plans. I wasn't privy to any of the conversations that the Divided Communities Project has done. You know, maybe that's fine. I mean, I'm just a white, middle-class woman, so I'm not, you know, the target audience really for the Divided Communities Project. That's fine. But I'm just to say, if we look at concrete proposals, ours came first. And that's not to discount at all what the what Beverly and I know they put a lot of work in. And I think the Task Force on the Future of Policing is very important. But I think it's different. And I've already said that. And, you know, I can say it again till I'm blue in the face, but it's doesn't seem to getting through really. But yes, I believe it's different. I believe it's important. Councilmember Sandberg also, I think it was it was her who who quoted Box Booker, you know, all hands on deck. We need we need all all avenues to pursue all avenues to improve public safety. Well, then, why shouldn't we pursue this as well? I just I'm I'm just all these contradictory things I'm hearing from my colleagues are really baffling to me. Furthermore, here is it. We've done the work. You know, my 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 co-sponsors and I and the the people, the many people we talked to and the the two people who originally had the idea and the many conversations we've had, we've done the work. We have an ordinance. It's in front of you. We have a structure. If you have something better, let me see it. You know, Councilmember Scambler, you think we should have a liaison to different social service agencies? That's a great idea. Let me see the proposal. I think all hands on deck could very much include that. So I just. Everybody who spoke tonight was in favor of the commission. I don't I don't just don't understand why. I mean, can you quote somebody who is against it other than Ms. Reese? And I think she, you know, she has her perspective. None of you repeated that perspective except Councilmember Sims. And, you know, he can expand on that when his turn comes. But I just I'm just baffled. I mean, you're you're hearing all of these personal experiences from people who came forward this evening. Everybody's in favor of the commission. We all recognize it's a big problem. We all recognize that all hands on deck is what's called for. I I don't know what you're afraid of. And as far as the commission, why commission and not call it something else? Why not call it a commission? Why do I have to defend that it's a commission? You know, what what is wrong with that? I just. Done. I I I'm very disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith. What I would say in my final comments is that has been my issue all along, beginning with my conversation, initial conversations with them. The authors of this proposal and those that brought it to us in the first place. I am very supportive of the body of the CAPS Commission. I think the colleagues that I've spoken with will will let you know that I have been consistent is that I agree and support that. I'm just not quite sure it should be a commission. I have not seen anything that's different than what we can do from one of these other groups as far as that's why I ask questions about legitimacy and power and these sorts of things. That seems to indicate that we value certain groups more than others, and that's just not the case, not to speak for all of my colleagues. This issue is bigger than just the city of Bloomington. And many of the entities that have been mentioned this evening are out of the city's purview. So I think there are, again, I don't want to say there's confusion, but it's still kind of unclear to me. The avenues. Again, I get it. I support it. I'm just not so sure it should be a commission. More voices is always a plus. There are always a plus. I I just don't know what to make of the comment. I'm just a white, middle-class woman, and I'm not the focus. I'm not so sure what to make of that as as part of this conversation. But here's what I will say. I've heard a lot about voices, unheard voices. And trust me, I am one of those marginalized voices that have fought my adult life for equity and and race relations and those sorts of things. And I work with many, many other people and represented many in that endeavor. Again, not having a voice. First of all, the CAPS Commission, again, which I support, I'm just not so sure it should be a commission. But the body of it says that there is 11 positions or or appointment positions. And I think through the proposal, and there may be two more that'll come later, but I've only identified nine. And not to take a whole lot of time to go through them, but of the categories, I'm sorry, the appointees and some of the positions, it mentions black people. And I, when I, when I see that, I think about what about the representation and voices from groups like the NAACP, Black Lives Matter and their core council, the Enough is Enough, folks, the IU NAACP on campus, the Neil Marshall Black Caucus, or I'm sorry, Neil Marshall Black Culture Center and their programs. So I think about those. When we talk about the Latinx, Latinx, I'm sorry if I mispronounce that population, I've not heard a lot about El Central Comunal, La Casa on campus, the Commission on Hispanic and Latin, Latin, Latina Affairs. We talk about mental health challenges. And I know there's been some input, but where is Centerstone and Meadows and the CAPS program that's on campus? These are voices that are working with folks, and they're not the only voices. And there is some some discussion on lived experience, and I think I heard the term secondhand information. But those are the things I think about. We talk about the population of physical disabilities. What have we heard from the Council of Community Accessibility? We've heard much over the my on my years on the council from Mr. Randy Paul, not to specifically identify him, but there's been many ADA-related issues that that he's brought to our attention and we have taken very seriously and has affected some change in some of our legislation. So again, there may not be, we'll get better at at hearing these voices and acting on these voices. I I'm just not so sure that there are no voices in many of these cases. Non-binary gender identity or or our non-cisgender. LGBTQI, the Bloomington pride, we've got the group on campus. That is one of the the things that the Black Lives Matter Core Council supports as well. When we look at the homelessness population, and I've said, well, we want to talk, I've heard, we want to talk to the individuals and, yeah, they've been served and there's advocates for them, but and and that's fine. I agree with that. But with the homelessness, I've not, where does Shalom fit in? What about New Hope, Wheeler, the Homeless Coalition? If we get down to the drug addiction population, Amethyst House, Centerstone, Courage to Change. And again, I'm not denigrating or 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 marginalizing these group or or these populations. It's just that over the years, we've heard some, and I've not heard from some of these organizations that advocate and in many cases speak for those that we may not hear from a consistent basis. We've heard some from Middleway House and their director. And the domestic violence population is another group that would be represented on this proposal, this proposed commission. Person with a previous record of incarceration, New Leaf, New Life, that there's there's and again, not to say that they've not been involved with some of the the draftees of this ordinance. It's just not been made clear to me. And in many cases, when I brought it up, it's like, well, we want to hear from those individuals more so than the organizations, which are the advocates and in many cases the voices that bring it to our attention. So those are just my thoughts. Again, I the more voices, the better. I do support the concept of what we're talking about. I've just, as I have from the beginning, is just have thoughts and concerns on whether it should be a commission or not. Earlier in this session, I asked a question, if, in fact, a focus group brought some of these same recommendations that had been researched and was part had been researched properly and was brought to the city council or one of those bodies, that wouldn't be, wouldn't it not be considered? I think it would be. And again, I understand the historical perspective from all of this. For over 30 years, we brought a lot of things to the public from housing disparities and arrest records or arrest rates, expulsions and suspensions from school over time. And and we've had those discussions and some, there's been effective changes. So I'm not buying the fact that being a commission has more power, more influence on city council or the administration because it's a commission as opposed to a task force, not discrediting it or discounting it. Again, my only issue is whether it should be a commission or or whether it should just be a commission. So I will also remind the public that there will be opportunity again for when this proposal comes to the city council, there will be more public comment and it or it very well could go to another committee meeting. I'm not anticipating that, but it could. But there still will be future public comment availabilities to discuss further the the merits of what we're discussing this evening. Okay, I think all council members have had opportunity for a final comment. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
I just wanted to mention that any council colleagues could have brought an amendment. And if the major concern was the name commission, an amendment could have been brought, and it still can be brought. That's it.
Thank you very much. All right, to my committee members. Are we ready to consider a due pass recommendation? Okay. Then I will start with committee members to my immediate left on the screen. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Scambler. Pardon?
Pass.
Pass, thank you. Councilmember Sandberg.
Pass.
And Councilmember Sims will pass until the this comes before the council. So our vote is one, yes, three, pass. And I don't, Mr. Lucas, I don't know the schedule for when this will come to the council and when it will be further adjudicated.
This will come back to the full council next Wednesday, November 18.
Thank you very much. As you heard from Mr. Lucas, it will be brought to the council November 18. I'll look forward to having more conversations, giving more thought. And I just want to thank the public for their comments. And I do believe that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you all, and see you next time.